See if you can get it, Kim. Okay. All right, six o'clock, so I'm just gonna call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Town of Washington Planning Board. We have a quorum present and Howard is placing his recording device. So can we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So just ask the members if everyone has reviewed the minutes from the last meeting? Were there any changes, comments?
No.
If not, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. So we have three public hearings on tonight and one new application off our workshop. The first matter is 3707 Route 44, and this is the applicant Raymond Goncalves is seeking a special use permit for a service business within the Mabbittsville Hamlet Zone. At our last meeting, we classified this as a type two for seeker, requiring no further environmental review. I remember at the last meeting, the required ag statement and the consent to inspection hadn't been submitted. Were those submitted? Do we know, Kim?
I'm sorry?
Were the required ag statement and consent to inspection submitted since the last? Okay. Alicia, they, did you get the ag statement and the consent to inspection?
Yes, we received both of those. There's for the agricultural data statement, we're still missing the map, but I spoke with the applicant and that will be prepared. It's not urgent that it's at this meeting since we have to carry the meeting over until the next month anyway. But that's the only thing that's missing now is just the map.
Okay.
For the ag data.
Can you turn the volume on? Okay, great. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so whoever is representing the applicant, can they come forward? Yes, please.
Now in the hearing. And they, it was a client. I wasn't here the last time because I forgot to change the meeting time, so I showed up sharp at seven. And we left. I missed the boat, so. But Ray, you can probably just describe what you're doing. It was really for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, I'm switching from, just basically going across the street and. Well, somewhere in this area, we would like to have a spot where we can also stay overnight if we need to. And I just wanted to own something for my business, you know, have something. When the day comes and I actually have to sell the business, it's with a building, so.
And so maybe a little, the building that Ray is talking about, many of you, I'm sure all of you probably know it. That building, if you go back in history, that was actually Sam Audia's first shop. Before Audia's, you know, went a little bit across the street. The downstairs has always been used as a garage by the Audias, even after Sam moved across the street. I can remember back at high school doing things there for Bob and Pete. That's always been maintained as a garage. The upstairs is an apartment. Personally been in both of them. So Ray's plan is that the personal training that he wants to do, he wants to do in part of the building, and he also wants to be able to use part of the building upstairs for his own basic quarters. The footprint of the building is not getting any bigger. He does have a parking plan. Again, I missed the meeting, so I know that was raised. I think he submitted that. To Alicia's question about the map, and I don't know if this will do, Alicia, but I printed off parcel access, essentially the vicinity map that shows the parcel in question, and then also shows where Andrea Woodner and Allison Cavey are, the farm in the back. So I don't know if that will, will do it, but I made eight copies of it. So I'll leave one with Kim and, you know, I'll leave the other six on the board table, if that makes sense.
Okay?
Sure. And that about describes it. The board has any questions or anything else to be helpful with? I'm gonna try to answer it.
Does anyone in the public have comments, questions? Anyone on Zoom?
So we received a letter from the CAC, from Margaret. And she questioned the use of the second floor possibly going commercially. And that was concerning to CAC. And she was wondering if, if that was gonna be commercial, did it meet the requirements of the Mabbittsville square footage formula that we're aware of? But it appears from this testimony right now that second floor is gonna remain residential. So it's, it's not an issue.
Well, not completely. Right, Ray, I mean, part of it.
I'd like to use a bit of it.
Is it an office or is training?
Office and one room for Pilates.
So we don't know about the square footage formula then.
But would that qualify, the question I think becomes, is that a home office? And is that separate from what that Mabbittsville calculation requires?
So let me. I'd be taking my home office and.
There's going to be an apartment there, you'll have a bedroom, kitchen, you're gonna still have a place to live there.
Yeah.
Part of that second floor, you're now gonna have an office and a studio?
I was hoping to have an office and then one, one room for Pilates, a Pilates studio.
So the, the formula, if I may, they were, Alicia and Aaron and I traded some emails on that topic. I'm pretty familiar with the formula from when I was on the town board for some years. The formula, in my opinion, and I think AKF agrees, AKR agrees, does not apply when you have an existing building. The, the whole idea of the formula, the legislative purpose of the formula when it was first passed, and Bob and I probably commiserate on this as well as Skip. The underlying purpose of the formula in Mabbittsville has never worked, for starters. The theory was that they didn't want, the legislature, the town board at the time, didn't want those older homes being essentially subsumed by commerce. And actually, the opposite has happened in Mabbittsville. I was thinking about it earlier today. And you go back into the nineties, we had the ice cream shop, the Mrs. and me, that's gone. And that existed for decades. We had the bowling alley, that's now a self-storage. I don't know how it converted with the so-called formula, but it did. The, this is a broader topic, and I know Mike's familiar with it too, but the formula doesn't work, for starters. That's not the planning board's issue, but the formula as applied to an existing building, if you, if you read the calculation for how the, you can have this much residential if you have this much commercial, it does not apply to buildings where the footprint isn't being changed. So, and Alicia's firm and I traded a few emails on it, and I'm a terrible emailer, so they're always misspelled and run on sentences, but I think they concluded that it doesn't apply. So sorry for the diatribe, but, you know, the formula's been a problem. And as far as I'm concerned, in terms of the orderly development of the town, has worked exactly the opposite than was intended.
Yeah, that isn't the planning boards. You can't, you have a law.
I had a platform, so I thought I'd go with it.
I read, I read that section of the law.
No.
I've read that section of the law enough times. And it's very confusing. It is poorly drafted and it's very confusing.
Which is why its purpose is important, is why was it created in the first place?
Well, I don't know.
No, that's what I'm telling you, is because the theory was, there were homes there. Timmy McEnroe still lives up there, a lot of houses. And what we didn't want was another little mini commercial area. So if what you were gonna have was, you wanted to add a new commercial building, you needed a new commercial, you needed a new house. Guess what? No one's building houses in Mabbittsville. No one ever has. So the, what it's done is stymied, in a sense, go by some of the places there now. I mean, Mabbittsville, to be perfectly candid, is not flourishing. And the formula is part of the problem, is that it comes here, understandably, unless we were around when it was passed, I wasn't. But when we, when we see it, to, to the chair's point, it's a very foreign piece of law. Doesn't really make a lot of sense at times, and we struggle with it. But on the, on the, on the micro issue was, does it apply? To be frank, I don't think it applies at all.
Oh, what do you, what can I ask?
Alan, a different question, because I, I think that may be true, I'm sure what you're stating is true as far as its original intent. But again, the face of the law is still a little convoluted. To me, one of the other issues is, that may, that may, round is the wrong word, but I think you'll know it, exempted, is that it's, it's a, is it accessory to, to a home occupation?
It probably is, but I didn't dig that deep.
Yeah, fair enough. I mean, I, but it sounds like it is, right? You're not talking about a commercial Pilates studio, are you?
Well, it is that.
It's not for Ray and his wife.
Sorry, I can do that backwards. But that's, it's accessory to the commercial use on the, on that first floor, right?
I don't know if I even call it accessory, Joe, it's really part of the same use. It's not, you know, this is a gym and that is, you know, fit shakes.
I agree, and I think the way that this strange code revision is written falls in line with that too, that it's not, it's not, it's not accessory use the way zoning lawyers would use that. So I think you're right. I think on either premise, it probably doesn't apply, is my opinion.
I agree with you.
So, but I do want to get that on the record, because I think that is another exemption, so to speak.
I mean, so Margaret wrote a letter?
She did.
So how did Margaret do what she's doing?
She, my point is.
She recited the formula from the, from the code.
You know, what I mean is.
I don't know how Margaret did what she did.
No, the.
I know she has a business there.
Well, so I'll give you the history.
Yeah.
Margaret and Charlie bought that house from Glenn Mann, and he was the superintendent of schools. That was an old barn, but it was pre-existing. No, no new footprint came in, so that's why it was lawful. So this is really the same thing.
It makes sense what you're saying, I just don't know what, how we should resolve it though.
But I think the letter's from the CAC and not from, it's from the CAC first chair.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
That's a good point.
Well, hold on, so Margaret signed the letter. I agree it's not from Margaret personally. And what I'm saying is, is that, that that's an example of good reuse, Margaret's case. Okay.
All right.
Yes, I think this is too.
Thank you.
It's, it's not, there, there's another business that's not far from you that came in front of us and was received a permit and then proceeded to open two, three, was pushing to open multiple businesses in that one structure. And I think.
The ambulance place, yeah.
Yeah.
Or the previous ambulance.
Right. And anyway, I think this is different. I think this is all under one, one business, one owner, same purpose.
With keeping a residential unit upstairs, so I think that's an important part of it too. That feels different to me, that law, it's hard to decipher differently. No? Oh, no. Yeah. Bob, do you have something to say?
Yes. First of all, I would like to thank you all for everything you do. Secondly, in that same section of the law, there is, in section D, new non-residential development, halfway down the page, it specifically excludes from this definition are the expansion of conforming and legally non-conforming, non-residential, in this particular law.
I, I know that section very well, and that adds to the confusion of the section above.
I don't know what the hell that means.
I, I read that first and said, oh, so it's out. And then I kind of went back up to the one above and you get all jumbled again. It's the section above that complicates it.
So the Mabbittsville history is, the formula has been a problem. The planning board and the TPA for years have, I mean, you know, the nursery was a residential home. It was up against. We passed the law and then that came up. It was for sale for years and, you know, specifically, there's currently around twenty commercial businesses in Hamlet and Mabbittsville. And at least, at least seven rental houses. There's a couple of them that are not, that are empty. Don't even know who owns them. And as far as I think down there, there's eight owner occupied houses. And Ray and myself, we, and everybody we could get ahold of, every residential home there, we did, they were all, they were all for, I think Ray even had some letters submitted.
Yeah.
You know, that they don't have a problem with. My family's owned the building since 1947, I was born and raised there. That shouldn't have anything to do with it.
Nostalgia.
But it's, it is a use that's hundred fifty feet up the road. And he wants to move, he doesn't want to pay rent anymore, he wants to own something. I didn't want to put my building on the market. I knew I was gonna run into all kinds of problems with, with zoning. And I thought, I looked into Ray, we thought that was a perfect use of the building. You know, with cars, you know, with lots of cars. And after we moved the dealership to a new location, we used that building as a body shop for about nine and a half years. And then a punch depot for another fifteen or twenty years downstairs. And then when we sold the dealership in 2016, my brother's been using it as an engine rebuild. He builds engines for people, hot rods and stuff like that. So he still is using it. Now he's moved north and built his own garage way up north. He's got a map there, so it's time to move on. And this is a nice, clean, really nice, clean business. And it benefits people and it benefits a lot of the town people. I just want to go on record to say that. I don't mind saying it out loud, I've been trying to change that law in Mabbittsville for a long time. And we've just been overwhelmed with other issues that seem to be a little bit bigger. We haven't really had time to concentrate on that. I think originally, back in the day, Ray Howard, it was, we didn't want to see any McDonald's or pumpkin doughnuts or, you know, drive-through type of things. And, and that was it. And the formula, I think we fought about that formula, Howard, how, how long, do you recall?
I remember I was at the meeting.
Six months, nine months?
1989, there was a man called Thurston Green.
I remember him.
And he was the lawyer, he was representing public people who did not have businesses. And the compromise was, I'm pretty much on the same page as Bob. The buildings that were there as commercial originally stayed as commercial, and they could be expanded. The buildings that were not commercial could not become commercial unless you had more residential. And that was the agreement with the residents who lived in the surroundings as well. At that, there's a lot of people at that meeting. And that was the compromise that they came up with. So Bob's property is a pre-existing, call it a non-conforming or commercial property, and he has the right to expand that property.
Or to improve it.
Okay, well, I don't think that we are really going to make a decision, sitting here, on how to interpret this law. I think we need to get advice from our council. I think by next month's meeting, we'll have thought about this more, we'll have some, some more input from council, and we'll be able to decide on that issue. But it doesn't sound like that's going to be an obstacle. That's, that's what, the way it sounds to me right now. But I think we should next move to some of the other issues which we talked about last time, to just go over before we set this up for a public hearing next month. We last talked about the parking in the back and how you were going to change that. You made some changes a bit, so I think you should, you should talk a little bit about that. Not set it up for a public hearing, set it up for sending it back to the county.
This is, I also sent it, yeah, take care. I've got this, Alicia. So the idea was to enter from one side, park in the back, kind of, the neighbors are pretty far off. And Steve, I, I spoke with him, really nice guy. The two of us will work out where we're gonna put trees, and I want him to make the decision as well. But we, we would enter from one side and come out from the other. I realize the property line's pretty close here, but if that's okay, we'll keep it this way. If not, we could also enter and exit from the same side. So whatever, you know, is best suited.
I think it's nice to have two, just because you're going in and out of a very good road and getting close to an intersection. So I think if you can control the traffic flow, it's probably increases safety.
Yeah.
Situation.
Is there something we don't know about in the code about how close the, the driveway? I don't know the answer to that. Could the driveway be that close to a, to the building?
I think it can.
It can? You see it all the time, it usually it's an older building, so.
I believe it's far enough away that it meets the code.
That's an existing driveway that's close.
Yeah, that's already there. Oh, I thought it was this one that was already there. This is already here?
The one on the east. The one on each side.
The one on the east side. I think this one, this one. This is what I'm saying, but not this one. Okay, yeah. Okay. Can I ask a question? What is this fence mark? What is that?
So people don't make the mistake of parking in the front, backing out. Yeah.
Oh, and then have a park there.
Yeah, so that way it's safe and they're not backing out on Route 44.
You said there would be two spaces in the front, right?
Yeah.
And you reduced the parking from the last meeting to a lesser amount?
I think it was eight.
Yeah, eight, well, we have to do, we gotta do handicap.
Yeah, right.
Two handicap.
So is the parking reduced from the last presentation you made, or is it the same? Is it still sixteen spaces back now?
No.
It's reduced a little.
Yeah, I think it's only ten spaces.
Yeah, one, two, ten.
You did reduce it. Yeah, sixteen spaces last time.
Oh, that was the first, yeah, that was the first.
Yeah. So thank you very much for doing it.
Yeah, so, which is great, which is great.
Except for the handicap, they have to be, I believe they have to be, because they're moving in wheelchairs. But it's just gonna be those two spaces and enough room for somebody to get out with a wheelchair.
Okay.
Are you ready for the road to the exit that you're gonna be creating?
No, no, the.
It's paved now.
It's paved already.
The orange part is all paved already.
Yeah.
They're just stopping at that and then having ground.
So the whole thing's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think this makes sense, and I think you're doing everything you can to make it safe for entry and exit. I like the, I like the new parking diagram, and I think that fits with the number of clients that you said you expected to have in the business. So I agree with Nicole, it's not overdoing it.
It's, and it's using it in a, I think, a much safer way than the parking was before. I like the in, enter and exit. For me, the screening was very important. I think doing a parking lot, it's really, it's very important that you have screening for your neighbors.
Yeah. Over here, there's a lot of, a lot of trees and bushes, but we're still gonna do, we'll do some more screening to add into that. And then I, I really want Steve, the neighbor, to tell me what he would like. I think that's important, instead of just throwing trees up, you may not want them in the location that we choose. So I thought it would be best to work with him and.
Might be good to work with him before you come back, because that way.
He's, he offered to come and I didn't.
Just because then we have a final draw, you know, then we know where you're putting trees and where.
So this is where we would block out.
So no matter what, you're suggesting that it would be within that, but he might say more here or more here, something like that.
Did he have any suggestions when we spoke to him?
Yeah, we, we chatted for a little bit, and then he invited us to an art, an art show there, and I didn't write down, so we sort of forgot.
Did you buy any art?
He seemed pretty, he was like, no, it's fine. He, he basically asked, you know, every once in a while, you know, when we have an art show, can I book on the lawn? I said, absolutely, you know, it's only on Saturdays and on the weekends. And, and I told him, you know, you know, whatever you want to do with the, the trees. And he's, I mean, he seemed pretty easy about it. Like he wasn't really opposed to any ideas.
Yeah.
Maybe just get some email or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, get some, because we're gonna want a little bit, something's pretty set for us to sign off on as a site plan.
Okay.
And we have to keep the public meeting open until next month because of the county?
We have, let me just ask, Alicia, is there anything else outstanding on this? I know that we have a county referral that we have to do, is there anything else?
I think that's the main, I'm just double checking here. Yeah, that's, that's the, the main thing. And just also, when you come back next month, in order for the site plan to be, the, the signable site plan, we have to add the signature blocks that we, that are in the memo?
You'll see in the memo that she sent and that Aaron sent, there are two signature blocks that have to go on the thing. And that's what, one you have to sign and one I have to sign. Or actually, the owner of the parcel has to sign.
It's, it's not like a substantive thing, it's just like a copy paste.
Yeah, we just plug it into the, the document.
Okay.
You have more of these, right?
And then. Sorry, I don't know if I was interrupting.
I'm gonna show you how to do it here.
Okay, Alicia, what were you saying?
When the hearing is open, just to keep it open until next month, so that the, there's time for the county to reply.
Yep, okay. All right, so then can I get a motion to, oh, excuse me, one moment, before I close it, Bob, you have something?
I just have one more comment. Since the, the board had asked about screening and the, and the neighbors, especially the neighbors who should be heat. I've known him since he bought the property. He lives, his residence is in Reinbeck, and he fixes up old houses for the fun of it. And thanks to us, he fixed that old, it goes to the house up very nicely. And redid the barn in the back that used to be an empty shop.
The art show.
Or that, it was instantly a thought, a furniture, a young business. Remember that's. But I've met with him several times, and once in a while, he has some artists around the county. They've displaced more, it's a private show, not a big public one. And he's always done. He's all for having, right?
Okay, great. So can I get a motion to authorize, Kim, to send the county referral in?
So moved?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Then we need a motion to close the public hearing, to adjourn the public hearing until next month. Yes.
Support a Ray private, I think it's a good private. I don't know, Skips, if they're long timers in it here. And I think they did a real good job.
Great, thank you. Yes, a motion to adjourn. I get a motion.
So moved?
Second. Emily?
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you next month.
Have a good. See you next month.
So we have good advice of counsel on that. I think that's a good idea.
I have a question. Because I downloaded, it was a letter from the CAC that Aaron brought up this issue, and then it was announced now. That's not even a memo, but it's gonna have all the information of it.
So Howard, Howard?
I mean, I thought I'd been. I thought that letter went out to everybody.
Howard, can I request that you do something for me? When you speak, can you let me know if you're speaking on behalf of the CAC or if you're speaking on behalf of yourself? Okay, I understood that. I understood that. In the past, I've been confused about your role. So I just, if you don't mind, just tell me.
I'm going to call the next matter up, which is another public hearing. And this is for the Hurleys at one ninety-nine Mile Wood. This is an application for site plan approval to replace and expand a screened-in porch of private residence. ZBA has already granted the requested variances and a special permit condition on us giving site plan approval, which is required because they're increasing the size of a non-conforming structure by more than twenty-five percent. At our last meeting, we classified this as type two for seeker, requiring no further environmental review. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Nicole and Richard are on duty. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we just state your name for the record again?
Hello, I'm Michael Sloan from Sloan Architects, representing the Hurleys for this project.
So we'd ask if you summarize your application in case there are some people online who are in the audience that don't know.
So this project is, as you said, that this is a house that's on a lot that's situated. So it's not conforming because the house was originally built in the setbacks because of the strange shape of the lot itself. And there's an existing screened-in porch in the back of the house, which is on, on the small side. And being at the house, the way the house is situated, having a larger screened-in porch is really beneficial to the owners here. But that said, you know, the whole porch is inside the setback from the property lines. So we designed a porch that's up on the second level of the house. And being that, just about less than ten, you know, eight feet from the porch, there's a steep hillside that goes down to a pond that's, I think about, we said a hundred and sixty feet or so away from the porch. We put the porch on piers. That way, there's minimum disturbance to the land and allows the owner to get access around the, fully around the house for maintaining the yard. The porch itself is just a screened-in porch, but it is covered. So it is, it does go towards the increased square footage of the house. That said, the square footage is less than the permitted square footage. Have the numbers here. I believe it's twenty-five percent for a non-conforming house. So we're under that. And this, you know, the point of this porch for the owner is to enjoy the outdoors of this property. One of the things about this porch is it cannot be seen really from the neighbors because it's, because of the terrain of the property and the size of the parcels in that area. You cannot even see it from the road. The, the, so there's minimum disturbance. And we did add the silt fence for during construction. So any, even though it's minimum in terms of excavating, really just putting it in piers, it would all be contained prior to the slope.
So you mentioned that there's a pond?
Yes, there's.
Is it, is there a buffer shown on the, is the buffer?
Yes. It's a hundred and sixty-five, it's on the second page. Yeah, it's on the second, second sheet. It outlines the pond and it shows you the dimension of a hundred and sixty-five feet and the buffer's one hundred feet.
Very good. Thank you.
And the ZBA has granted the permit.
Does anyone in the audience or online have any comments about this application?
Question, I wasn't listening. I apologize. Are you putting in silt fencing around the structure?
Yes. So, yeah, so there's, there'll be silt fence. And then even when they excavate the holes for the piers, there'll be silt fence around the stockpile. And when they take the soil out and place it next to the site, that will also be silt fenced in too.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, Alicia, is there anything else outstanding before we vote on this application?
No.
Okay, so no further comments from anyone. Let's get a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. So I think we're ready to vote on this application. Has everybody had a chance to review the resolution that Joe sent out? Yes. The final resolution, the final one.
Corrected.
I probably won't send out this resolution in the next six months.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve that resolution? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, let's rotate.
On favor, I need it all in favor. Okay, great. You're all set. So.
Thank you.
It's actually on another application.
Oh, okay.
What is the actual date of the next meeting?
It's June fourth.
It's June fourth.
Because we talked about the getting the county referral memo back just under thirty days. So obviously, we may have it by then.
Yeah, they got to get that out right away so that we have the chance. Usually, usually they do it, but yeah.
So one thing, just, so you will sign and then we'll distribute it. All right, great. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you.
That Chrissy Brakes hasn't contacted within the planning department. But we had to, didn't receive documentation. Board of something. So we have a contact there now. You can scan and email it now. So if you have a timeframe, please.
Okay, I've been in contact with them.
Oh, you do? Perfect, great. He's your person. You tell him the next meeting is, it's really helpful. And turn him around and feedback with us because he received a hard copy.
Yeah, I had a question about that. On one of, I think it was the Mulvey application, they said that they hadn't received the, the hard copies and that. And I don't really understand that. I thought that you sent them.
I did. I sent them, I sent an email to him in my booth. I don't, I have a copy of the email. I just sent him the electronic.
And I thought that's what we did.
I thought that's what we did. I was told that that's what we did. But I guess if it's site plan, which I just found out the other day because I asked Kristen, if it had to do with the site plan, then it has to be.
It has to be the hard copy.
I didn't realize that. But in the future, we'll be following that.
Yeah, I didn't know that either.
He was just so helpful. He's in that department. So if you, you already contacted. So that's great. I definitely give you that.
Okay, thank you so much.
So the next matter we have up is the Mulvey application at two forty-seven North Mabbittsville. This is an application for site plan approval in connection with a project to add new living space above a garage. The ZBA has already granted the requested variances and special permit condition on us giving site plan approval. At our last meeting, we classified this as a type two for seeker, requiring no further environmental review. A referral was made to the county due to the proximity to a county road in an ag district, and they have responded that this is a matter of local concern. So can I get a motion to open the public hearing on this matter? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Again, Wendy Lewis, Wendy Lewis.
Representing the Mulveys, two forty-seven Mabbittsville.
So I've just basically given a quick thing of what's happened. But can you just describe, in case there are people in the audience, what it is happening on the site?
The Mulveys would like to add some additional living space above their garage, flat roof garage, it's about three hundred and thirty-four square feet, and create a small bedroom and bath. And that's pretty much it. Just make it more.
Do I just see something in the paperwork saying, well, it's not adding another bedroom so that it doesn't?
It's not a new bedroom. It's just, I guess I should say relocating the one that they have on the first floor up to upstairs.
Oh, okay.
The project will not increase another bedroom.
Yeah, I remember reading that, yeah.
So it relates to the separate requirements.
Thank you. Yeah, that was what I, yeah. So it's relocating. There is no longer going to be that room on the first floor.
No, that'd be just the other one on the second. Okay.
Okay. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments about this application? Anybody in the audience? Do any of our board have any questions, comments? We went over this last time. Okay. So can I get a motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I think we're ready to vote on this. Has everybody had a chance to review the resolution prepared by Joe?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt that resolution? So moved.
Second.
Nobody else is doing it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so you're all set. Thanks.
Good job. Thank you.
Oh, thanks. And so the next matter is the Rally Farms, Memas Farms Lot Line Adjustment Application.
Politically putting this chair back.
I know.
It's a very orderly group.
Good evening. Brian Houston, Land Surveyor that prepared the plan. I don't know if you need to see this. Color coded here. So the property is located on North Power Hill Road in our R ten district. The current property for Memas Farm is outlined here in orange. They gain their access via a existing common driveway with the neighbors, the Donna Hughes, which are to the north. Currently, there is an existing house at the bottom of the hill, and there is another house at the top of the hill. This is the infamous Heidi Otto lot.
Oh, I didn't know that property.
This house burned down and was rebuilt. Some, I don't know how long it's on, let's say five years.
Three to five years.
Yeah, it was under construction for about two years. Yeah, somewhere in that timeframe there. So what the use of the property is, it's mainly residential. They do have, they have some horses, they have some chickens, they have an occasional donkey that comes. And that's what goes on at the lower end of the property here. The upper end is, is where they live. So they, the opportunity presented itself from Rally Farm Two, Tim Bonnacu is the owner of that, for them to pick up some more acres. Currently, their lot's fifteen acres, two houses. That's kind of a pre-existing non-conforming type of thing. This gets them up over twenty acres.
That's the work of Heidi Otto.
Yes. So main thing, the house is at the top of the hill here. This gives them a little bit more of a buffer around their house. It gives them a little bit more land here to do with animals.
I have a question. Why is the property, the new property, the line jagged like that? Why isn't just a straight line? Is there some scenery or some, some?
This is all a field.
Right.
Right here. And Tim says he really doesn't use, there's an existing drive, it's a farm lane that comes across here. And he didn't, because this leads over to other fields, or he didn't want to give up any of them. And it wasn't important to the owners because once you get down close to here, right about where my finger is, it drops off.
I used to slay right down that hill.
Yeah. So there is an existing farm lane with an existing crossing that's there. Tim is reserving himself an easement if he needs that for farming over this section here. And.
Remind me again how they access.
To get to the house?
Yeah.
This is a common driveway here. It comes all the way up the hill and comes into their house.
Okay, so no change.
Do you get an answer?
No, not that I know of. It does lend them though, because there's other trails here. They could, if they wanted to, they could loop that around. This is a little steep here and improve it. But the main thing is getting above the twenty acre threshold and having this as a buffer.
So twenty acres sort of legitimized accessory structure, right?
Right. So there's two houses and now we're up to twenty.
I mean, it's legitimate anyway.
Yeah, it was. I mean, they were able to get a building permit, but still, it gets them over twenty.
So once they're over to twenty, they can, don't have to go to ZBA to do any other permits.
I would imagine that's how that works.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out what the.
Yeah.
And my neighbors.
And.
It could just be to have more buffer land around.
Are there any plans for development?
They say no.
Even just adding a building?
Yeah, I would say Bonnacu is more concerned than that, that hundred something acres sitting out there to the left of that.
Yeah, Tim's lot is, I think it'll be like still two hundred and seven acres when this is all said and done. To my knowledge, there's no, there's no plan for it developed. The only thing they've, the only buildings that they've added are these run-in sheds after they built the house here. And they got a nice little farm thing going on there.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
And so those two buildings would back south with twenty acres and we couldn't add anything anyway, right?
No, it's correct.
That's correct. Yeah, if you, right.
Yeah.
You need to have at least twenty acres to have the two houses.
Yeah.
So. So the original house, Heidi Otto's house that she built up there, had a huge foundation. And the new house doesn't occupy that total foundation because there was a built-in swimming pool in the house and all this stuff. So out to the, I guess that's the western side of that house. I think there is some existing foundation that's not being used. And that's probably why they wanted that buffer on the right-hand side, so they can extend the house that way. You don't know.
Well, I have no idea. Because they have a pool over there already on this side, over here. I don't remember when I was up there.
That pool used to be in the, in Heidi Otto's house.
If there's foundation there, it's buried.
No, I think they knocked it out.
Yeah, I think they took it all out.
Pounded it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Alicia. Any comments? Can you tell us what the issues are? There are any?
Well, just on the matter of application completeness, there is no EAF included. And that's not really a substantive issue here. However, just procedurally, if the planning board is going to waive that requirement, then it needs to be explicitly waived. So that's just one procedural thing. We checked the NRI maps. And there, there's agricultural soil on the property. The board has the ability to require a conservation easement. We're not necessarily recommending that, just pointing it out that that ability is there. And I think those are the main. Yep, that's all that's left.
So Alicia, I did do a short EAF after I got your comment.
Oh, well, then that takes care of it.
But since we're just talking about this, if the state doesn't require you to do one, why do we do one for the town?
A lot of municipalities, actually, I think almost everyone that I work with, requires the EAF just as part of their municipal review. So it's not required under state law, but it's required under the local law.
We'll get one for, you know, with additional applications. Thank you.
Yeah, we've waived that in the past. But it's just a simple lot.
Yeah, I'll leave this with Kim. And you have a completed.
And I think we discussed the past, we discussed the conservation easement last time. I think it was also a comment. I mean, that's not.
Is there a conservation?
No. To Trish's comment, I don't think it's intended for this kind of.
And Brian, I would just add something for the future when you come. Please look at the newly published NRI. Because that's going to affect how we look at subdivisions and things like that, because there's a lot of data in that that we'll be looking at. Possibly, we have to talk about it, how much, it's not in the zoning code, how we view the NRI, but it's information and data. So, and it's good information and data, so.
I'm familiar with a lot of towns that, and some towns adopted them.
Yeah, we adopted it. The town adopted it.
And so there's, there's a lot of information there.
Information.
It, it's, it's a broad, it's always a broad brush. And. It, uh, it's, it's a broad, it's always a broad brush. And, uh, so I, I will definitely-
It identifies areas, um, that may be important besides wetlands, rental pools, habitat, all that stuff that becomes important.
Yeah.
I think this is just a simple lot line.
Yeah, which we have done many times before without doing a public hearing. So I'm comfortable waiving a public hearing. That would be my suggestion. Everybody comfortable with that?
Oh, it, it does need to be, I forgot to mention that, but it does need to be typed.
Typed, uh, okay. So it is considered a type two because it's just a lot line adjustment. So, uh, can I get a motion to classify this as type two for seeker? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? So I think we're ready to vote on this. So everyone have a chance to review Joe's, um, resolution that he drafted in preparation. Can I get a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna go search that up later.
And building was-
Brian, wait one second.
On the 1980s, 86 to 89 to 95, one on- And she decided to, uh,
No, no. I didn't think of that.
And we argued that-
I thought we didn't. I'm thinking that, just in case, that's why I stopped.
Sure. And 220 weddings.
Just procedurally, we're a little unclear whether we needed a vote to waive the public hearing. So we're going to have a vote, waive the public hearing, so that it is on the record. Um, just need, uh, can I get a motion? We just think it's cleaner to, I can have a motion to waive the public hearing for the lot line adjustment. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just so that is on record. We're gonna say that was done before the resolution. We're now teed off to the resolution. Okay?
Thanks, Brian. Thank you. Have a great night.
It's easy to do that and that is- Um, is there anything else that anybody would like to discuss or that we need to address?
You can move in second in the next meeting.
It's actually very convenient.
A little gossip that the McDale property is going up for auction on May 18.
Did you see that? McDale is going up. I don't think the alarm goes off. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.